Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, June 27, 2023 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Paul Russen from Redemption Hill Calvary Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Havasu Heat Baseball Team.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, citizens. The Book of Philippians, Chapter 2, Verse 3 says, "Let nothing be done through selfish ambition or conceit, but in lowliness of mind let each esteem others better than himself." Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability you give us to approach you with our prayer requests. We thank you for a city, a state, and a country where we can still pray publicly without fear of government interference or persecution. God, we lift up our mayor, the vice mayor, the city council, the city staff, our police chief and his officers, our fire chief and his firefighters and paramedics. We also pray for the citizens of this community and ask that you touch their hearts and be a presence in their lives as they navigate the circumstances surrounding them, and that you would help us all to be morally sound, neighborly-minded, assisting those in need, especially the elderly, the mentally challenged, or those might be struggling with addiction, poverty, or hunger. And Lord, we ask a special blessing on the families of the Granite Mountain 19, as we will commemorate this Friday, June 30, the 10-year anniversary of the day that the Granite Mountain Hot Shot Crew, representing the city of Prescott, Arizona, gave their lives while protecting the citizens of Yarnell, Arizona. These men represented the best of the best, dedicated firefighters who showed the entire world what it looks like to esteem others better than themselves. Father, may we always be sensitive to the needs of others, just as we read in the Bible the example of your Son Jesus Christ and the way that he lived his life. Continue to bless Lake Havasu City, its people, the families, businesses, and churches, and it's in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Havasu Heat Baseball Team.
Oh, thank you, guys. I'm Norm Lyon. I'm the general manager for the Havasu Heat, and with me I have Rick Twiman. He's the owner and manager. And we have a couple of our players, Brian Blondell, he's a local here. He's been with us for three years playing, and Luca Nencola, he's been playing with us for a few years, too. This is our 31st year or season. So last year, we moved back to Havasu. We play at Lake Havasu High School. We went 40-5 last year in our schedule, and this year, we are 20-6 so far. In the last 31 years, we are currently 1,063 wins, 262 losses. So we have three World Championships and more wins than we can think of. So we just want to tell everybody in the community, thank you, all of our sponsors and all of our host families. Without them, we can't do any of this stuff. So I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
No, I've talked to, you guys have heard me enough, but I want you guys to meet some of these guys.
Yeah, so my name's Luca Nencola. I am blessed to be able to play baseball out here for the second year now. I'm a Colorado guy, so for me to be able to come out here, it's like we have to have host families and we have to have people willing to kind of take us in. And for two years now, I've had the most wonderful host families. I've met the most wonderful people here, which is why I keep coming back and keep coming back. So I just wanted to say thank you for all you guys. You guys are all amazing to us here. And yeah, go, go Heat!
Hi, guys. I'm Ryan Melondell. I'm born and raised here and just want to say, super grateful and glad I can be playing in my hometown, representing. And we can't do all of this without our sponsors, our host families. And we just thank you guys so much. The community's amazing, coming out, supporting us. Go Heat! Thank you, guys.
Yeah, this year, I didn't want to talk about the World Series. So this year, we are going to the World Series. Last year, we didn't with our move back. It was just too much to get everything done. So we will be going up to the Marshall Gates World Series, which is up in Utah, up by Salt Lake City. So that will be from the 28th to August 1st. So we're excited about that. I know all the boys are excited to go up there and do that. So hopefully, we can go up there and bring back a title.
Hopefully bring back a world title, and we'll have a little party here at the city like we did the other three we won.
Yeah, nice.
But again, thank you.
Yeah, we are ranked top five in the world right now.
Yeah, congratulations.
Hopefully, this is a very tough week. We have eight games this week, eight games next week, eight games the following week. So our guys are getting a little tired because it's starting to heat up now. So.
Yeah, very nice. Well, thank you so much.
Our goal is to make it to the national championship and bring you guys back another title.
Well, looking forward to it. Yeah, congratulations. We're so glad to have the Havasu Heat back in Lake Havasu. If you want to get involved, go check out one of the games at a beautiful facility over there at Lake Havasu High School. Support the team. And then also, they are looking for host families each year. So if you have that as an interest, reach out to them. So again, thank you for being here. We'll move on to item four on our agenda, which is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Michelle Lynn. Cameron Moses. Jenny Koch. Here. Jim Dolan.
I am here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kalshieh.
Here.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Williams, was that a yes from Councilmember Moses? Okay. So Councilmember Moses and Councilmember Koch are joining us this evening virtually. All right, item five is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor motion.
Please, Vice Mayor Lane.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and we have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six, which is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions due to some current and upcoming vacancies. The following is a list of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, four regular pilot members, one regular non-pilot member, one alternate pilot member, and one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, two alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two regular members and one student member. Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member, one alternate member. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Applications for consideration were, the deadline passed, it was May 26. However, the City Clerk's Office will continue to accept applications for any future vacancies on these boards.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I have a couple updates and highlights since the last time we met at a council meeting. In particular, Mayor, you presented a proclamation to Lisa Kruger in recognition of a 27-year career and journey as a professional chamber executive in the chamber commerce industry. Lisa recently announced her upcoming retirement, and we obviously appreciate the partnership we've had with Lisa and the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce. And of course, we congratulate her and wish her well with her future plans. Mayor, you proclaimed June 21 as National Go Skateboarding Day in Lake Havasu City at a pre-event hosted by former skateboarder pro Eddie Katz at the Tonell Memorial Sports Park, and also recognized this year as the 10-year anniversary of the official park opening. 10 years went by quick. And Councilmember Campbell, you joined the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce ambassadors at a ribbon-cutting for the Hampton Inn. Just a reminder that the city offices and facilities will be closed on Tuesday, July 4th, and observance of Independence Day. Police and Fire Department personnel are always on duty. However, the admin offices will be closed. Trash recycling services are not affected by the holiday, and city offices will resume normal schedules on Wednesday, July 5. Please stay safe and enjoy the fireworks display over Thompson Bay at 9:00 PM, and tune into KNTR 980 AM for a live simulcast with music. And finally, in light of the upcoming adoption of the property tax levy this evening on the council agenda, I'd like to share once again this short little educational video regarding property taxes and, in particular, the city's share of the property tax assessment. Let me see if I can make this work.
Let's talk property taxes. Here are some common questions about property taxes. Where does my property tax bill come from? The Mojave County Treasurer sends out property tax bills for local jurisdictions. Local jurisdictions include your county, city school districts, special taxing districts, and the state, not just Mojave County. Where does the money go? Lake Havasu City only receives 7% of your property tax bill. For Lake Havasu City residents, the majority of your property taxes go directly to education. Other government agencies that receive a portion of your property tax dollars include the school district, the community college district, Mojave County. The school district taxes are the largest portion of the property taxes from other jurisdictions, followed by the community college district. Your property tax bill lists each agency's tax rate and the exact amount that each agency receives. How is my property tax bill calculated? The amount of your property tax bill is based on your property's assessed value, the exemptions it qualifies for, its use, and your local property tax rate. Property assessments are conducted every year, every other year, or when a property is transferred. Mojave County Assessor assesses the value to properties across the county. The local governing body approves a tax rate each year during the budget adoption. Lake Havasu City Council has kept the tax rate the same for several years. For more information on reading and understanding your tax bill, please visit the Mojave County Treasurer's Office website.
And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During public hearings, if citizens want to engage in the conversation for each individual topic, you are encouraged to do so. You would make your way when we open the public hearing to the podium, state your name for the record, and then you would address the city council directly. So just make sure you're addressing us up at the dais. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams or near her, but red, green means you have your time, yellow means one minute's remaining, and red means that your time is expired. During this part of the public discussion, we can have a two-way conversation. Council can answer questions or engage in the topic. Later, at the end of our meeting, we'll have a call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens can address the city council within items of the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City that might not be on the agenda, but we cannot engage in a two-way conversation at that time. And I'll give more pointers when we get to that item on the agenda. All right, we'll start with item 7.1, which is a Series 7 Beer and Wine Liquor License for Havasu Riviera Marina at 2067 Havasu Riviera Parkway. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Andrea Lukowitz has applied for a Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License for Havasu Riviera Marina located at 2067 Havasu Riviera Parkway. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. This location is properly zoned for a Series 7 liquor license. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant or the applicant's representative, I believe, is in attendance to also answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to recommend the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number 7 Beer and Wine Bar License for Havasu Riviera Marina, 2067 Havasu Riviera Parkway.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell. We have a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 23-3682, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustment. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration for appointment as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment. This appointment is necessary to fill a vacancy due to the current and upcoming vacancies of three regular members and two alternate member positions on this board. The application review panel conducted interviews for the Board of Adjustment on June 6, 2023, and recommends that Robin Hill be reappointed as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment with the term ending June 30, 2026. Ms. Hill's application was provided to you in your council packet, and the applicants were also invited tonight to the council meeting to answer any questions from the city council.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? Ms. Hill, would you like to come introduce yourself to the council, just say hello so that the council can put a face with the name and the words on the application?
Good evening, Council. My name is Robin Hill, and I am here to say hello, and I'm happy to be serving for my third term now on the Board of Adjustment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Hill? All right. Well, thank you for applying. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor motion.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 23-3682, Appointing Robin Hill as a regular member to the Lake Havasu Board of Adjustment with the term ending June 30, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Hill. The next item is 7.3, Adopt Resolution Number 23-3683, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received two applications requesting consideration for appointment as regular members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. These appointments are necessary to fill the upcoming vacancies of two regular member positions. The application review panel conducted interviews for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board applicants on June 8, 2023, and recommends that Mercedes Kaiser and Jason Mitchell be appointed as regular members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with terms ending June 30, 2026. Happy to answer any questions.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? Both applicants are here. So Ms. Kaiser and Mr. Mitchell, if you want to make your way to the podium, just say hello to the members of the council so they can put a face with the name.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mercedes Kaiser, and I am excited to have been appointed. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Jason Mitchell, and I look forward to serving Lake Havasu pending I get all the motions to votes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Do any members of the council have any questions for the applicants? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If you'd like to address, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. You need to make your way to the podium so folks at home can hear what you have to say. Okay. Yeah, just to hold your comments, sir, until you get to the podium. Yeah.
It sucks getting old. I just wanted to know, is it a requirement, I'm selling my house, but I really love this city. I just have to move to somewhere else. Can you still, can you run for office if you're not a resident? You can't do anything for the city if you're not, unless you live here, right?
Correct. You have to live within the city limits.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right, would anyone else like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I just wanted to say that it was a pleasure to meet both of these applicants during the interview process. They're both very enthusiastic, and I believe they're going to serve the city well should this motion pass, and I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 23-3683, Appointing Mercedes Kaiser and Jason Mitchell as regular members to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with terms ending June 30, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, sorry. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 7.4 is Adopt Resolution Number 23-3684, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received six applications requesting consideration for appointment as a member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. These appointments are needed to fill the one regular member and one alternate member vacancy. The application review panel conducted interviews for the Planning and Zoning Commission applicants on June 6, 2023, and recommends that Susanna Ballard be reappointed as a regular member with a term ending June 30, 2026, and JP Thornton be appointed to fill the alternate member position with a term ending June 30, 2025. All six applications were provided to you in your packet, and the applicants were also invited to attend tonight's meeting to answer any questions from the city council. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, members of the council, for Ms. Williams? All right, we do have the applicants here. So Ms. Ballard and Mr. Thornton, if you want to just come and make your way to the podium and say hello and put a face with a name?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to continue serving. I've served as two terms as alternate member and fulfilled the expired interim term when Doug Hardy passed away. So I'm looking forward to a full term and working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm JP Thornton, and I look forward to being a part of this city and what's going on. I've had the opportunity to spend a lot of years here, my wife and I, since we were teenagers, and been able to watch the growth and the development, and look forward to being a part of what's next and the growth and having a voice and listening to other voices as well. So.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 23-3684, Appointing Susanna Ballard as a regular member with a term ending June 30, 2026, and JP Thornton as an alternate member with a term ending June 30, 2025, to the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Lane, specifically on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We try to find a balanced group of applicants that kind of do a wide breadth of different industries and backgrounds. And so I think we've been able to have that. And generally, our alternate members make their way to a regular member, as Ms. Ballard did through the process. But we had several applicants on this one. But we do have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any additional comments from any members of the council? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations to the applicants. Item 7.5 is Adopt Resolution Number 23-3685, Appointing a Member to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, Local Police and Fire Boards. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration for appointment to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, PSRS, Local Police and Fire Boards. This appointment is necessary to fill the upcoming vacancy of one appointed member position. The application review panel conducted interviews for the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System boards on June 21, 2023, and recommends that John Nuss be appointed as a regular member with a term ending June 30, 2027. The applicant's application was provided to you in the packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions. He's also in attendance tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams? And then, Mr. Nuss, if you could make your way to the podium and just say hello so council can put a face with a name?
Hello, everybody. I've met a couple. It's nice to meet or at least see the other members. Oh, excuse me. I usually have a very loud voice, so there, I don't use the microphone. I'm thrilled. Thank you very much for your confidence, and I look forward to serving the city.
Excellent. Thank you for application, yes. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Ordinance Resolution, to adopt Resolution 23-3685, Appointing John Nuss to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, Local Police and Fire Boards with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, and we have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. And to all the applicants, congratulations. Thank you so much for stepping up to help serve Lake Havasu City. We really appreciate it. For anyone that's interested in applying for a board committee or commission, the applications can be filed with the City Clerk's Office. But we have had such amazing luck over the last few years with getting amazing talent to serve on these boards, and we're really grateful for that. So thank you. We'll move on to item 7.6, which is Adopt Resolution Number 23-3686, Amending Resolution Number 22-3593, Transferring Budget Appropriations from One Fund, Department, or Division to Another for Fiscal Year 2022-23. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I don't have a formal presentation for this item. It's for the entire fiscal year, for the year that we're in and about to end on June 30. We have one budget amendment that we're requesting council approval for. The refuse fund had additional expenses for credit card fees, bad debt, and outside services, and so the allocation was short about $41,000. So we've transferred $41,000 from the non-governmental division or department in the general fund over to the refuse fund to make sure that the budget allocation is sufficient in that fund. And that's all for that item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. So, you know, making an adjustment for the budget appropriations is something that we do on an annual basis. You know, we start planning almost 30 months before some of the months even occur. So for us to only have one change that needs to occur to finalize this current budget year that will be ending on Friday, June 30, this is quite amazing. So thank you, Ms. Olson and your team, for such accuracy that we only had to do this for this one opportunity. Are there any questions, members of the council, for Ms. Olson? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 23-3686, Approving the Budget Amendments Listed on the Amended Schedule E and F for Fiscal Year 2022-2023.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.7 is our Truth and Taxation Hearing and Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2023-24 Property Tax Levy. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. This is the hearing that we conduct each year that we have any increase in our property tax revenue. The city tax rate is not changing. Not sure why that's not.
On our screens, okay, is it on the main screen?
Kelly did her magic. Kelly did her magic. So the city tax rate is not changing for fiscal year 23, 24. However, since the assessed valuation for all of the properties overall in the city limits are increasing, that then generates additional tax revenue that we will receive. That amount is about, I think, $375,000, and a portion of that is for new construction. Property taxes, as indicated in the video, help fund city services that are mostly in the general fund or primarily, such as police department, fire department, parks and recreation. And also, as indicated in the video, only 6.7 cents of every dollar paid by each property owner goes to the city. So we only receive 6.7 cents of every dollar paid on those property tax bills. So you can see the difference for the levy amounts. So you can see the revenue is going up from a little over $5.9 million to a little over $6.3 million. So that additional tax on a home with an assessed value of $100,000, so for every $100,000 of assessed value, there would be a $2.95 increase for the year for that property. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions for members of the council, for Ms. Olson, on the truth and taxation hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
As soon as my screen comes up, I'll make a motion. All righty, I move to approve the levy of the proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 property tax and to assess the levy at the July 11th, 2023 City Council Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell?
I just want to remind them that we did get rid of one of the taxing districts. That was $67,000 for the median on McCulloch because of our increases. So I think that was a good move for all of us, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. We are ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item seven point eight, we're going to need a motion to adjourn to a very special meeting. It's gonna kind of lights and cameras, and we'll change over to a different kind of meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, motion?
All right.
I motion that we adjourn to a special meeting.
Perfect.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to a special meeting, and I welcome you all to our special meeting that's occurring this evening, and.
I didn't see any changes.
You didn't see the lights in the camera? You blinked. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was missing the good stuff.
Yes. All right, we'll move on then to item seven point nine, which is adopt resolution number twenty-three, dash, thirty-six, eighty-seven, adopting the fiscal year 2023, 24 final budget. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. We are finally at that point of the process where we're ready to adopt the final budget. We've had many discussions on the budget and the items in the budget. We've been working on this as staff for about 10 months, and the council really kicked off the formal portion of the budget season with their retreat that they held in February. So thank you to council for providing the direction and the priorities so that staff could put this budget together for you. During the internal review of the departmental budgets, the city manager reviewed supplemental requests from the departments, and those are items that were above the base budget. The base budget is all of the items in a department's budget, less any one-time items, so that we can just reset their base. And then if they have additional wants and needs, whether it's equipment, personnel, or just supplies, they submit those in the form of supplementals. Those are reviewed. We had supplementals exceeding the amount of money we had available for them, but we were able to approve many supplemental requests so that we can continue to not only hopefully meet the level of service that we currently provide, but hopefully exceed it in many areas as we can. At the two budget workshops in April and May, council was provided information on revenue projections, and we discussed additional staffing needs, deferred maintenance issues, and potential wage stabilization adjustments for city staff, and we also reviewed projects within the capital improvement plan. On June 13th, council adopted the fully funded CIP and the tentative budget. The tentative budget included additional funding, such as grants, for the additional spending, so that should we receive additional revenues in the form of grants, we'll be able to actually spend them with that additional budget allocation in place. Tonight, we just had the hearing on the property tax for the truth and taxation hearing. Again, we're leaving the property tax rate at the same amount, but applying it to an increase in assessed value. The additional revenue is about $359,000. I think I said 375 before. It's about 359, with new construction. So on July 11th, council will adopt the final property tax levy. The tentative budget was published, as required by law. Council can change or reduce the amount of that, the final budget, but we cannot increase the amount over what was adopted at the tentative budget level. There have been no additional changes to the budget since the tentative budget was adopted on June 13th, and staff is proposing that council adopt a budget that is $228,632,955. As I said, the council will meet again on July 11th for the purpose of adopting the property tax levy rates for city property tax and the one special district that we now have in place. As Councilmember Campbell indicated, we do have one less improvement district. Improvement District Number Four was dissolved, and the city picked up the cost of that while maintaining that same level of service. Again, the city property tax rate is staying the same. The levy amount will be a little over 6.3 million. And for improvement District Number Two, which is the London Bridge area, down where the swap meet is held, that is being assessed at .7370 per $100 of AV, which is the same as it was in prior years. So, and with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. So as Ms. Olson indicated, there's lots to be proud of in this budget that we have in front of us. The team at the city has been working for 10 months on this process, several public hearings. Council got involved at our annual planning session in February, and we've had several hearings on it as well. But this budget keeps our property tax rate flat for the sixth year in a row. So it's six years of the same property tax rate. You did witness our truth and taxation hearing that we had at the item previous to this, because our revenues are increasing because of the new construction. New construction is assessed at a different level, so that those revenues that we'll be taking in, and then, of course, the valuation of the homes. It also has no tax increases, no new tax districts. And again, as Councilmember Campbell had indicated, we actually got rid of one of the taxing districts. We dissolved that in our meeting in May. It allows us to do Station Seven. Chief Plathis, in his fire study last year, did a full analysis of fire and fire services and indicated the need for an additional station and also the location, which happened to be land we already were planning for, which is fantastic, but we'll be able to invest in Station Seven and be able to pay for that in cash with no debt financing. We'll also be able to finish the courthouse. Again, no debt financing and pay for that in cash. The improvements to the island walking path, if you use that, you know, it's in great disrepair. $10 million in road repairs. That's $10 million on the city streets. That's in addition to the state investment on Highway 95. We'll be able to invest in a short-term rental code enforcement officer to help address some of those concerns that we've been having in our neighborhoods and to be in compliance with the updates that council adopted back in December that went into effect March 1st. And we also did this with doubling our budget stabilization, which a lot of entities call it maybe a rainy day fund, but it's a reserve fund to ensure that we have the proper reserves should something happen in the economy. And in addition to this, we're going to be able to make some great investments into our infrastructure, public safety, parks, and the like, and again, doing all this with no debt financing. So it's a budget that we can be proud of. It's not something you read about in newspapers across the country or even in our region that many governments can say that we're fiscally responsible, no tax increase, is still investing in the needs that our citizens are looking for and being able to meet all those priorities. So with that, I would certainly like to thank Ms. Olson and your team, Angie, Trina, and the whole team that have been working really hard, Mr. Knutson, you and your department heads for all of the difficult conversations. You know, when we talk about a $228 million spending plan or budget, I mean, it's very complex and takes into account considerations of grant funds that might not have been secured yet or potentially will be in, but if we don't have them in this budget, they couldn't be spent. So it's a very complex process and navigated it very well. So thank you again to the entire team for all of your efforts and work on this. Are there any comments from members of the council, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to say thank you to Jill, her staff, the entire city staff coming together and working. You hear when one person says, "I need this," and somebody else in another department says, "I need this," they've been able to work together in order to make sure that we have a balanced budget, as the mayor said, without borrowing any money. I also want to thank the citizens of the city. You came forward this year and gave us some of the information that we needed, such as the ball fields, the half a million dollars that the city is able to put up through our Parks and Recs Department to help with some of our fields, the fire station study, and the citizens saying, "We need another fire station up there." It goes on and on what the citizens have actually told us that they needed, and we've listened, and we've been able to incorporate all of those things into the budget, again, without borrowing any money and being a balanced budget. As the mayor said, you can look across this country and see where those things aren't necessarily happening, and they are here. So hats off to all of you. You've made it so that we can meet our statutory requirements of passing a budget by the first of the month so that we can continue to fund our public safety and fund our Parks and Recs Department and get the ball rolling so we can put that $10 million into the streets that the people said that they've wanted. So thank you all for doing that and helping us help you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any, Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe you can help me. Why do we put, like, potential grants that we think we're going to get, that's extra funding? Why wouldn't we just put that in the general fund instead of like all the different funds, or in some cases, we have it in the, like, the water fund and the, so just to keep it clear?
The accounting rules require that the funds be placed where they match their purpose. So first, typically, grant funds will go into like just a special revenue fund. That's a grant fund. However, if those grants are related to water and sewer and they're related to that utility and enterprise fund, then we sometimes can run the grants through those enterprise funds. So we just put them in the fund that's appropriate to their purpose.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, the item we heard earlier this evening, when we had to make the budget appropriation shift, would be much, much greater if we had just one area and then had to disperse them all throughout the year or at the end of this budget cycle. Yes. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Olson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I just want to reiterate what others have said. I just want to thank the staff for another year of hard work. Definitely some big wins for the city, you know, the Fire Station Seven, the courthouse, additional money for the roads. Very proud to be sitting up here and be able to work with you guys and approve this. So thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
All right, any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Dolan?
I'd like Vice Mayor to make a motion.
All right, Vice Mayor Lane?
Must have spoke at the same time I did, because I didn't hear him. I move to adopt resolution number two, three, dash, three, six, eight, seven, adopting the fiscal year 2023, 24 budget in the amount of $228,632,955.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. All right, the jazz and the music of our special meeting has come to an end, and now I'll entertain a motion to reconvene to our regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion to reconvene to our regular meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are now back to our regular meeting. We'll move on to item seven point eleven, approved services agreement with Haven Family Resource Center, Inc. for domestic violence response and victim assistance for fiscal years 23 and 24, and 24, 25. Chief Sterling?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I am saddened that I don't have my own special meeting, but this will do. So tonight, this item is a services agreement with Haven Family Resource Center. And for those that don't know, Haven is an acronym for Havasu Abuse Victims Education Network. Currently, they provide domestic violence response and victim assistance for us. Our current contract is due to expire June 30th of this year, and so a request for a proposal went out March of this year, and the Haven Family Resource Center was the sole respondent. We reviewed and evaluated the award, and we recommend that the award be given to the Haven Family Resource Center. A little background, Haven has been contracted with the city since 2005. They've been a great partner for the police department in providing services for our victims of our community, primarily dealing with crimes against children and sexual assault victims, and we've incorporated response to domestic violence cases as crisis response in the past few years. In addition, forensic interviews, sexual assault exams, those type of things are important services that they provide for us. And so the appropriation of the amount of $100,000 was included in this proposed budget, which you just approved, and we recommend council approve this services agreement. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
I have to answer.
Are there any questions from members of the council, for the chief? Yeah, Haven has been a great partner. They're there to assist the police department and help victims on their worst day, and they've been able to provide exceptional service to our citizens that find themselves in a very difficult situation. Would, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I move to approve the services agreement with Haven Family Resource Center Incorporated for domestic violence response, victim assistance for fiscal years 2022, 3, 2024, and 2024, 2025, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item seven point one, two, approved statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC for Oracle Cloud software support for human capital management, enterprise resource planning, projects, budget planning, and finance reporting modules for fiscal year 23, 24. Ms. Ware?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item pertains to the, a statement of work with Camtra Technology involves providing Oracle software support for the fiscal year 2024 with a maximum cost of $242,520. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them. It is also included in our fiscal year 2024 budget that you just passed.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council, for Ms. Ware? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I'd like to recommend any youth in the community that study in computer software. They might want to take an OR. They might want to take an Oracle class. It could be pretty valuable in this city. So I make a motion. I move to approve the statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC for $242,520 for fiscal year 2023, 24, and authorize the city manager to sign the statement of work.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Next is Item 7.13, Adopt Resolution Number 23-3681, approving a minor text amendment to the Lake Havasu City General Plan to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the first of two housekeeping items. This one is ensure the city's general plan language aligns with the Arizona state statutes for major general plan amendments. The proposed changes to the general plan text are shown in the paragraph with the new language underlined and deleted language struck through. Prior to 2022, Arizona state statutes only allowed municipalities to accept major general plan amendments between January 1st and February 15th of each calendar year, and required they be processed by October 1st in the same year as filed. House Bill 2482 amended the state statutes, and it now allows submittal any time during the year and requires major amendments to be presented at a public hearing within 12 months of when the major amendment is filed, rather than within the same calendar year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is one of those bills that is beneficial for people. So this helps make things easier for folks. Are there any questions, members of the council, for Mr. Kearns? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item?
Hey, good evening. It's Bonnie. I just am curious about the whole general plan amendment issue, or as to why it has to be done, or what the... I didn't understand what the difference is and why it wasn't already in place. Also, just a reminder, illegal immigrants or aliens or whatever, illegal aliens in the contract, you might want to review other parts of your contracts. And, but that, I didn't... And the next one, I don't understand that one either. So if you could help me understand it more.
Sure. Yeah, so our general plan is the overarching plan for our community that's updated every 10 years. Lake Havasu City's general plan was last updated in 2016. It was approved by the City Council and then ratified by the voters in an election. When a major amendment needs to be done to the general plan that was approved by council and the voters, there's a process. And state law recently changed to allow that process to change. And so before you had to make an application, had to be received before, between January 1st and February 15th, and reviewed by July 1st in accordance with that process. Now state law allows you to make an application at any time, and a hearing has to occur within 12 months. And so this is to update our code to comply with the new change in the state law, that should a major amendment need to be made to the general plan, that it can be done through this process.
And that will streamline the process, hopefully?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, so they, for example, if you had a major amendment and you wanted to do it on March 1st, you would have to wait until January to even submit the application and start the process. Now you can start the process March 1st if you pending council action.
Or August 1st?
August 1st, too, yeah.
Thanks.
Mayor, may I add, last time the comment was made about the unauthorized aliens and the use of that term in our code, that's still a term that's used in state law, and so then that's why it appears in our state code, and that's why it's referenced in our contracts. So I wouldn't suggest changing it this time, but thank you for having us check that.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dolan?
Councilmember Moses just texted me and asked if he's allowed to make motions over teams, so I just want to let him know it was okay to do that.
It's okay, yeah, they're fully supporting members of the council, so.
Yeah. He's not jumping in, so I guess I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 23-3681, approving a minor text amendment to the Lake Havasu City General Plan to align the city's procedures for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion for members of the council? All right, hearing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.14 is Adopt Ordinance Number 23-1311, amending city code Title 14, zoning development code, Section 14.05.04m, general plan amendment to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second housekeeping item to ensure the city's development code language aligns with the Arizona state statutes for major general plan amendments. The proposed changes to the development code text are shown with the new language underlined and the deleted language struck through. So it's the same, in relation to the previous item, this is just pertaining to the development code instead of the general plan. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Kearns? All right, seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell? Please.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 23-1311, amending city code Title 14, zoning development code, Section 14.05.04m, general plan amendment to align the city's procedures for the general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. And welcome back, Mr. Kearns. I'm glad to see you back with us.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our final public hearing of the evening. Item 7.15, Approve Amendment Number One to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the City Fueling Facilities Improvement Project with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you once again. Before we get into the specifics of this particular contract, I'd like to provide just a short history by letting you know that the city currently has two fuel facilities in town here. Both of them have underground storage tanks, and because of their age, we can no longer get insurance for them, which is problematic. So those tanks have to come out. One is located at the airport and has not been used in a few years. The other is located here at the police facility used by our PD staff. As I just mentioned, they do have to come out of the ground. It's happening now. The work at the airport for those tanks is currently happening. They'll be done this week. The July 5th, right after the holiday, they're going to be, contractor will be here, digging up those tanks and removing them. So the tanks are coming out of the ground. That makes HR and risk management very happy, but it does bring us to the task at hand. As you indicated earlier, Mr. Mayor, this is a professional services contract for design and construction administration of two fuel facilities in town here. One would be located at the Public Works Maintenance Yard. The other would be right next door in between where we're at, at the PD and the fire station number one. You can see here on this slide, the project schedule is eight months. That's not design. That actually includes construction. We hope to finish up design in just a couple of months, move right into bidding, and get this thing built as soon as possible. I will caveat this, that eight months is a perfect schedule. I think we all know, we don't live in a perfect world right now. We could run into some delays just trying to get the tanks on site and things like that. So everything goes great. We should be up and running at two sites by the end of February. This is just an aerial photo of the maintenance yard, the Public Works Maintenance Yard. This is the building I work in. The area identified in yellow is the proposed location for the fuel farm. This is the proposed layout. You can see it works very well with our existing driveways. We've got two 12,000 gallon unleaded gasoline in a diesel tank, surrounded by a containment wall. This is an aerial photo of the City Hall campus. If you can get your bearings here, find my cursor, that's City Hall. This is the police facility right here. We're currently right here where my cursor is. Fire Station 1 is over here. In the area identified in yellow is the proposed location. It's property owned by the city. It's a proposed location for a fuel farm in this, up here in town. This is the proposed layout for that. You can see this is inlet drive, Fire Station 1 down here, if that helps you get your bearings. And we're hoping we can manage the, what is a bit of a difficult grade situation, but we would prefer if we could make this into a drive-through for some of the larger fire trucks. The site is plenty big enough for them to turn around and get back out on inlet, but it might be easier if we can find a way to get a drive-through back out onto Spazano Way. If we're lucky enough to move forward with this project, we will likely use the Mojave County Bulk Fuel Contract to purchase fuel in bulk. I apologize, Angie and our finance department did this very detailed and comprehensive spreadsheet. However, it didn't transfer very well to the PowerPoint, but I can walk you through it. What it shows over here on the left is how much fuel we used last year as a city. It lists everything by department. And as it turns out, we used just a little over 144,000 gallons of unleaded fuel, and we used about 61,000 gallons of diesel fuel. Based on the average price at the time this analysis was done, last year, we spent nearly $900,000 in fuel alone. So what we did here in this spreadsheet is we applied the the contract price for bulk fuel purchases through the Mojave County Cooperative Contract, compared that price to what we have been paying, and used the difference. And we calculated savings just last year, had we been on that contract of $400,000, nearly 47% of what we spent. I was amazed by that. So we take that number and based on the preliminary cost estimate of our two facilities, which is around $3.2 million, that's an eight-year return on our investment, just based on those contract numbers. I will tell you that the contract from the county that we use for this analysis has since expired. They just opened a new one for the next five years. I haven't had a chance to analyze that. I'm sure that the costs per gallon went up slightly. I think when this analysis was done, it looks like the contract price was $2.37 for unleaded gasoline. It's incredible. I think the contract they just opened in the last few days, I just got it this morning, is somewhere in the range of 320 to 350, but I can verify that. So again, save... In addition to the obvious savings of buying fuel in bulk, some other benefits of doing this project is we'd have secure locations for our officers to fuel their vehicles. We would obviously put backup generators on both of these tanks, so fuel or gas stations. So in the event, we did have a power outage, our emergency services could still use our gas stations, because the backup generator would kick in and that'd be available to us. We would manage our supplies between these two fuel facilities, so we always had an emergency supply in the event that somehow we couldn't get fuel delivered to Lake Havasu City. We would never let our tanks ever dip below half full. And lastly, we just purchased a very expensive vehicle maintenance software, and if we had our own gas stations, we could integrate that software with them. And in fact, when the... Don's pretty excited. When a vehicle pulls in the gas up, it identifies that vehicle, runs a quick diagnostic, and it can tell you if the battery's low, the alternator isn't charging, and things like that. So lots of benefits to this. It's a high capital cost, but we're taking a gas station away from the PD. I feel bad for Troy. I'd like to... We did actually bid out a project to replace the fuel facility, the underground one, with an above-ground on-site, and it came in well over $900,000, which was double what we had in the budget. So we said, if it's going to cost that much, let's get a fuel facility that all of our staff can use. And that's really how we ended up here. So I think I went through that rather quickly. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frosley.
I would tell you, the contract with Jacobs is $259,515.
Excellent. Can you talk a little bit about how we, other than, you talked a little bit about public safety, but how do we fill the rest of our fleet vehicles?
We all have gas carts, and we fill up at the Circle K or wherever we might be. We had a contract that I think carried a slight discount with Parker Oil, which is right around the corner from the Public Works Maintenance Facility. I don't know that that... I think that contract has expired, and it hasn't been renewed, because we thought we were going down this road. So currently, we're not buying in bulk. The PD was buying in bulk, but they bought their last tank just a few weeks ago, because they knew this was coming.
So we just pay whatever the rates are?
That is correct. Wait in line and pay.
Perfect. All right. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Frosley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item?
Good evening, Don Wisdom. I didn't see anything on there for electric charging. We're looking at the present right now, but I think in the future, there will be needs for chargers for electricity. It might be trucks, it might be cars, it might be motorcycles, but I don't see that in your plan at all.
Yeah, Mr. Frosley?
Sure. And the reason is, the city doesn't own any electric vehicles. We are talking about that. That would be a separate endeavor in the future when the need arises, but this is simply to satisfy our fleet of 300-plus vehicles that use diesel and unleaded gasoline.
Well, that is a lot of vehicles. Times do change, and they might be changing quicker than we think. But long as you're in the construction of... I did want to ask, what kind of a tank are you putting in in replacement?
At each site, we'll have two 12,000 gallon tanks, one for diesel, one for unleaded. There's steel, above-ground tanks.
Oh, above-ground?
Correct.
Okay. So my question is, going back to electric vehicles, that's been in the future and might be here sooner than we think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Hi, it's Bonnie. I do have a question. The... Currently, the police department, or the city, is buying gas from local gas stations? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay. So then, if you're going to buy in bulk, and you're going to provide your own gas station, you won't be purchasing gas from the local economy anymore? Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be the case. So right now, public safety, police specifically, we use, until we decommissioned the underground storage tank recently, we did buy in bulk, and we fueled all of our police vehicles from bulk storage, not using any gas stations throughout the community. The other city vehicles have used those vehicles, but as you saw from Mr. Frosley's report, savings of a considerable amount of money will be realized by the taxpayers by looking at this alternative.
Will the savings offset the... Will the savings offset the... What the businesses earn from selling you the gas and then they have to pay their taxes back to the city? Will it be covered, I guess? I guess I'm feeling bad for the local economy that's going to be not making as much money off of you guys.
I guess I could chime in on this one.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I'm pretty sad. I'm pretty sad. No, it's like I said, I think it's good for the community. I mean, it's overall, that's, you know, from my boat up here, is that's what we got to do, what's best for the community. It does save the community money. I'm a little, as an optimist, I'm really curious, do they update those numbers like weekly? I mean, is it, so it's constantly changing, right? It's not like a locked price?
I spoke to somebody in Kingman who is part of the Mojave Contract, and it does fluctuate, but it's, the fluctuation is based on the delivery cost. You still pay for the additional fluctuation for the truck that has to put fuel in it to deliver it. The price on the contract is steady.
No, okay. Because I saw those numbers, I'm like, I need to get on that contract because that looked pretty good. So I'm a little, I'd be curious to see how, how much savings we do get. But in the long-term, big picture for the city, I think it's good for us to have our, our own stations. And I think even, like I said, I don't have backup generators and in emergency situations, power outages, I think that's definitely something that we as a city need. So I support it.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan, did you just say you don't have backup generators?
No.
Okay. That was my understanding, there aren't many.
I don't think most do, you know, it's...
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that.
I just live in a great community where we have good power, so.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. The, some of the benefits that I see from, from this is the, especially from public safety, just from fueling, I really like that element that, that we control it. Obviously, the generator that we just talked about is important to me and the cost savings, that's a great bonus on top of it. So, and that does at a time when gas prices were really volatile. So we'll have to see what, what goes forward. So. All right, Councilmember Dolan?
First of all, before I make a motion, I want to apologize for missing the last meeting. I understand it took five hours. I didn't realize how efficient I make these meetings run when I'm here. So I'm just glad I could be here tonight to make things go as smoothly as they can. So with that, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve amendment number one to the engineering professional services agreement for the city fueling facilities improvement project with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated in the amount of $259,515.
Second, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that concluded our public hearings. We'll move on to the call to the public. Again, this is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Please make your comments directly to the council. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is the light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means one minute's remaining. Red means that your three minutes is up. Again, we cannot have a two-way conversation on this because the items are not on the agenda, but we can listen intently. We can respond to any criticism that is made if necessary. You don't have to sign up to speak and we didn't have anyone sign up to speak, but would anyone like to address the city council during call to the public?
Okay, sorry. So, it's fun. Just funny story. The other day, I was driving up McCullough, going from Lake Havasu Avenue and McCullough to, on McCullough Boulevard going up, I get up towards Smoke Tree and in front of Albertson's. And there's a line of cars waiting to go through the light when it turns green. And there are like maybe one car, there's like one car in the left-hand lane and 200 million cars in the center lane that only goes down McCullough, the one lane. Of course, the right lane, turn lane is completely empty because it's always easier to turn right on Smoke Tree. I wanted to turn left on Smoke Tree, but because of the line of cars, I couldn't get into the left-hand lane because of the median that is there in front of Albertson's is not long enough for, I mean, it's too wide at a certain spot. Like it just becomes, you can get three cars through there and after that, it's just, you're backed up all the way to Riviera. And when you have, you know, your events on McCullough, it makes even traffic more delightful. I just would like to recommend as a concerned driver who maybe gets impatient with all those cars, that it's possible to make that part of the median just a little bit skinnier and you can get a couple extra cars in there. There might be actually a couple places on McCullough like that. And I just wanted to mention that to y'all. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
God bless you.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item nine is our current events. Are there any council committee reports? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple council committee reports. First off, want to bring up, last night, we had a Parks and Rec meeting. It went about two hours long. This is the second meeting in a row where we had a packed house with people coming before the board requesting an additional swimming pool be built for the Aquatic Center. So one of the things that the, the board is asking is for Mr. King to look at, look at that and see what it would take to have a second pool built, especially a lap pool for the swim teams. So that's something that was going to come before us someday in the future for, under the CIP. But it is something that the citizens are very adamant about right now. So then the other I have is this last week, we had a board meeting with Go Lake Havasu, at which time Mr. Terrence Concanon, the president of Go Lake Havasu resigned. And so Go Lake Havasu will be looking for a, a new president to be running Go Lake Havasu. So we look forward to working with them and getting somebody new in there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Are there any other council committee reports? Councilmember Campbell?
I have a couple. First off, for the Rural Transportation Abuskey Council, I just want to let you know that ADOT is working on their first 23 pavement repairs throughout rural Arizona. And if you want to check out what is getting taken care of, you can always go to their new website, which is az.gov/pavingrepairs. And you can see throughout rural Arizona what roads are being repaired. So that's very exciting news. I also want to say that the governor has even added more. I believe it was an additional $40 million for extra roads and potholes. So rural transportation in Arizona is definitely improving along with our own community, which is wonderful. I also want to mention for a Chamber of Commerce, where Andrea Hilar is going to be our new director, taking over for Lisa Kruger. I'm excited to see which direction she's going and according, starting new Abuskey councils as well, including possibly taking over the old Kriba, which was the Colorado River Building Association. So I'm excited for the direction of the chamber and which way they're going. Tomorrow, I leave for Arizona Workforce Summit in Phoenix, and I have been invited to drop by Fox News Channel to discuss with a contractor who builds foam homes. And it's in hopes to start an apprenticeship program here in Lake Havasu City that will reduce costs for overall construction and increase efficiencies. So I'm not sure if I will actually be on the news channel tomorrow, but 5:30 in the morning is going to come really quick after this meeting and I look forward to it. We have some great things happening in Lake Havasu City with workforce housing, and I look forward to sharing with that in the future on how we can possibly reduce some of these building costs for us. But thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? Right, item 10 is our future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 at 5:30. That's a regular meeting. And then it also will be the property tax levy adoption. And then on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023 at 5:30 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. Are there any future discussion items? All right, item 12, motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind and we'll see you next time.